Thank you for coming back and joining us. Let's call it to order. We'll call it to order the City Council, the Power Authority, and the Financing Authority Meeting. City Clerk?
Councilmember, Agency Director Chris.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Marcus. Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chairman, Mayor Chairman Paris.
No, I'm just the mayor. Oh, I guess I am the chairman of the Financing Authority still, aren't I? Okay, yes. Here.
We have a quorum.
Chairman Chris.
Call to order the redevelopment agency meeting. City Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Agency Director Mann.
Present.
Agency Director Marcus. Agency Director Zetto.
Present.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Chairman Chris.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The pastor, John Metters, who was going to do the invocation, gave up about the third hour, I think. And so, Chairman Chris, do you want to do the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. Please stand, place your hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, the consent calendar consists of items of routine business for which minimal or no discussion or special presentation is contemplated or required. These items may be acted upon as a whole with one motion, a second, and a single vote, single vote. If you desire to speak on an item or items on the consent calendar, you may fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You will be given three minutes to address your concerns before the agency or council takes action on the consent calendar. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. This same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items on the agenda and non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Chairman Chris at this time for the redevelopment agency.
Do we have a motion and a second for adoption of the agency minutes?
So moved, as stated.
Second. We're going to do an oral?
It's up to you, Mr. Chair.
Let's just do an oral. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Kitty, you're going to abstain? One abstention. Okay. We're going to hear a staff report regarding the redevelopment, RNB1, from Vern Lawson.
There's no speaker cards on that one either.
None?
Yeah, just wanted to read.
Chairman Chris and agency members, this is another procedure the city attorney is recommending that you consider and approve to protect our interest with the ongoing state take in Sacramento. Of course, we hope and believe that the lawsuit that's been filed may make this unnecessary, but this is a procedure to go ahead and allow tax increment to be spent by the city to pay the state ransom should that eventuality occur. We'd recommend approval. Same item is under the council agenda also. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Do we have any questions? Do we have any speaker cards?
No.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion to adopt?
I'll move that we approve the agreement to transfer of our tax increment between the city and the Lancaster Development Agency and that we adopt Resolution Number 17-11.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Motion passes. Turn the meeting back over to Mayor Paris at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to new business item one. Are any speaker cards? Okay. We'll hear the staff report from Deputy City Manager Jason Cottle.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity. As part of the formation of the Lancaster Power Authority, your council set out specific goals for the power authority to achieve. One of those goals was to increase the development of solar energy and partner with solar developers in an effort to stimulate economic growth as well as provide opportunities locally for jobs and wealth investment. One of the impediments to accomplishing this goal is the lack of transmission, at least as it relates to large-scale commercial projects. In an effort for these projects to export their energy, so to speak, when the large facilities, they need transmission lines. There is a new transmission line that was built on the west side at approximately 4,500 megawatts, which is fully subscribed. We've identified with Critical Path Transmission that there is an opportunity on the east side to provide that transmission capacity on the east side. We've been working with Critical Path, Kern County, Edwards Air Force Base, and other stakeholders to assure that this line can be successfully built and serve multiple purposes. Through this period of time, we've worked out arrangements, approved reimbursement agreements, and now today before you is a detailed development agreement that outlines the relationship as it relates to how we're going to work together in constructing and permitting this line. A couple of the highlights of the agreement, first is that, or highlights of the transmission line itself. It's a 3.2 gigawatt transmission line connecting North Edwards Air Force Base to a substation near Highway 138 to deliver and allow for the connection of energy opportunities, hopefully and specifically solar, which many are in the process of permitting on the east side of our valley. In this arrangement, the city will serve as the lead permitting authority in conjunction with Kern County because this line does go through Kern County. The Department of Defense through Edwards Air Force Base will serve as lead in the NIPA process as the transmission line goes through their land as well. It is anticipated this line will be completely underground, so the environmental process should be streamlined and made easier and comply with all county and regional rules. As part of this, the Critical Path will reimburse all the stakeholders for any effort and any work that is done on the transmission line. So there's no cost to the city. It's actually an opportunity to return investment for staff time as well as city involvement. Critical Path will serve as the lead developer. They will finance, design, build, and construct the transmission line. The city of Pittsburgh, who we're partners with, Kern County, and Edwards Air Force Base and ourselves will assist in the permitting process. The necessary approvals for FERC and CalISO to approve, and then once approved, the city has an option to purchase this line for $1. If we so choose to purchase the line, we will then become the owner and operator of that facility long-term, and FERC will identify a revenue stream to accomplish this goal. Critical Path also intends to pay us 2% of the project revenues. At this point, those have been unidentified because FERC sets those revenue restrictions. And of course, if built, it provides a new pipeline for solar development, energy development on the east side where currently none exists, which will then stimulate the economy, increase construction jobs, and obviously provide a much-needed source of energy, clean energy, to California and our valley. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
Any questions?
No questions.
We have one speaker card, Michael Reeves.
Mayor Paris, Council. Vice Mayor Smith, would you check and see if there was a speaker card, please, for the last, for the item on the redevelopment agency? I thought I submitted a card for that.
No, there isn't.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to comment on the agreement with the Pittsburgh Power Company. Here's a copy of the agreement with them. And in the event that there is a dispute, the parties understand that their right to appeal or seek modification of any ruling or award and its binding arbitration is severely limited. Any award rendered by the arbitrator shall be final and binding, and judgment may be entered in any court of competent jurisdiction. What concerns me is the city is going to be tied in with binding arbitration in the event there's a contractual dispute. And one of the first things I look for when I sign a contract is how to get out of it. We may not be able to get out of it, and we may be liable under this section in the contract here for reimbursement agreement. It's dispute resolution seven, 7.2, and it goes up to execution in term. So before we agree to this, I wonder if everybody's on board with having binding arbitration if there is a dispute. And if I understand it correctly, it says that everything will remain the same while it's being arbitrated. That's no help if we're the party that's going to have to pay. So before we agree to this, let's, and agree to be subject to binding arbitration, I think we need to review this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the development agreement with Critical Path Transmission, LLC, to work cooperatively with to construct the electrical transmission line.
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. All right. Moving on to new business item two. Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards on that, Mr. Mayor.
Let's waive the staff report. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve the reimbursement agreement with Pittsburgh Power Company, PPC, to work cooperatively with and construct the electrical transmission line in Alabellie.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
It's not, it's been cleared.
It's unanimous.
I didn't vote.
You didn't vote?
No. It wasn't cleared.
I voted for you.
It was the last vote. You voted for him. Vote, vote early and often. Yes.
There you go. Okay. It's unanimous. All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
It's moved.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous.
It's one speaker on the consent calendar.
Mr. Graha.
League of Cities kind of piqued my interest. If we're going to be setting ourselves apart as the energy capital of the world, I don't think we need to be a part of any League of Cities. I think we're in a league of our own. I wasn't prepared today, so I'm going to yield my time, and I'm sure Michael Reeves will have very educational stuff that you guys should listen to.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar as currently comprised.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's unanimous. Could we turn the cell phones off, please? Thank you. I'm going to recuse myself from new business one on the council agenda and turn it over to Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that the mayor's left the room and recused himself. On new business one, we have two speaker cards. Can we have the staff report, please?
This is the identical agreement that you previously considered. This is just from the city side, necessary because the transfer is occurring from the redevelopment agency, tax increment to the city, to ultimately be given to the state should that be the course of action.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. We have two speaker cards, Mr. Michael Reeves.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Smith. What is this, is this a CC?
No, this is one business one. Which, that might have confused you. See, that's why when you wrote it down here, there was a redevelopment agency item, that's like a sister item for the council. The council has to vote on it, too. So that's probably when you thought you were going to be speaking, and the clerk thought you wanted to speak on the city council side of it. So it's the same, it's like the same action, but it's being taken as a city council.
Okay, I'll talk on the city council's side of it.
Sure. It's the one you wrote on your card. It says transfer of increment between city Lancaster and Lancaster Redevelopment Agency.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
I just want to say again, I'm dismayed at the state that we have to do this. We have to, we're preparing to pay the money for the redevelopment agency as a contingency, which is fine with me. And I just want to say as a side, I was reading where the Lieutenant Governor of California last month wants to reconvene, and he's coming up with a plan to revitalize businesses in California. He calls it the economic growth and competitive agenda for California. So at the same time he wants to do this, his administration that he's part of are shutting down 400 redevelopment agencies. And, you know, I think that's oxymoron. We have redevelopment agencies that can provide jobs, and they're being shut down on the pretext that we want to give power to local government. And anyone that's familiar with that line knows that that's kicking the can down the street and putting the burden on local cities. You notice that they don't, when they say they refer it to local government, they do not give local governments taxation power to handle it. They retain the taxation power as they are doing in the redevelopment scale right now, but they want the local governments to assume responsibility. Some of it is also that some of the people, like Lieutenant Governor perhaps, and Attorney General, and some other administration officials may want to run for higher office, and they can use the refrain that they believe in local government, which is not the case. It's the case of not accepting responsibility for a state budget and kicking it down to the counties and the local governments. Thank you very much.
Mr. David Amber.
I believe I'm MB2.
What's that?
I signed up for MB2, sir.
Yes, you did. The clerk just wrote down the other one. Let me see. Okay, we'll put you there at MB2.
Thank you.
It says MB2 on his card. And then, but somebody wrote MB1 at the top. That's okay. Hey, no, 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 no.
I'll speak on MB1 if you want.
I think it was Marvin that did that, but.
I believe that makes the difference.
It's okay. Okay. I voted for you, so. There you go. Okay. Anything else? Any questions for staff? Do I hear a motion on the recommendations? I'll move that we approve the agreement to transfer tax increments by and between the city of Lancaster and Lancaster Redevelopment Agency and also adopt Resolution 1167. Call, go ahead. Second.
I will second that motion.
Call for a vote. Passes unanimously with the mayor recusing himself. Somebody could ask the mayor to step back in, please?
Okay. Let the record reflect the mayor is back. We're now going to hear a staff report on new business item two, the downtown roundabout and parking management. And if we could make this abbreviated.
I will start out. Mayor Paris, City Council members, you recall, just to set the stage, that in the adoption of the budget, council asked that the roundabout be taken out and staff take a comprehensive view with stakeholders on the entire issue of parking in the roundabout in downtown. That's proven to be an exceptionally worthwhile endeavor. We've engaged shareholders, the presentation you're going to see, and we'll do in abbreviated fashion. The things I'd like you to focus on is, A, that we are recommending the roundabout. Roundabouts are safe, and this one in particular not only will provide traffic safety, but it will also provide an entry feature. It's grant-funded. The second thing is sort of two parts we'd like you to focus on. Successful downtowns absolutely have robust parking management strategies, and we're recommending that you, we have the money to fund it, that we fund a parking management strategy. And in that parking management strategy, parking structures are absolutely essential to the future of downtown and the full development of it. We need to look no further than the new cinema, which sits on what was a small lot of 35 parking spots, and now is a vibrant cinema and retail area. And by doing that, and by having parking structure, we increase the opportunity for additional development. Those are the keys to the presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Robert and to Brian Ludicki. Robert Neal and Brian Ludicki.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Brian and I will take turns at this presentation. Before I start, I wanted to take a moment and thank our councilman, Chris. You helped us open some doors. You pushed us in ways that we needed to push to do more public outreach. So I just want to start off with that. And we're going to move fairly quickly through this, talking about the Boulevard Roundabout and roundabouts in general. This photograph shows the intersection of 10th Street West and the Boulevard as it is today. It operates at a level service B. There's an average of 15 collisions a year in this intersection, and this last year we had 13 collisions with 10 related injuries. This slide shows a layout of what we propose a roundabout to look like. This roundabout was a part of the downtown specific plan. We use this layout to study the impact to surrounding properties. It does not impact any of the adjacent buildings, although there's some exchanges of property. It would continue to operate at a level service B. I'm going to just move on and talk a little bit more about what is a roundabout. Basically, traffic coming into the roundabout yields to traffic inside the roundabout. It's designed for slower speeds, and this is really important to the safety of the roundabout. An element of most roundabouts is landscaping, not only in the center island, but also on the splitter islands. Pedestrian access, a critical component. And lastly, roundabouts move in a counterclockwise fashion. What I'd like to do now is take a few minutes and show you a video from the Federal Highway Administration regarding roundabouts.
Did you know that more than 20 people are killed and many more are seriously injured in crashes at intersections every day in the United States? Did you know that most of these deaths and injuries are due to right-angle crashes that occur at signalized and stop-controlled intersections? How much time do you spend stopped at a red light waiting for the light to change when there was no traffic on the cross street? Did you know there is an intersection alternative that is substantially safer than signalized and stop-controlled intersections and much more efficient? The USDOT's Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, has identified modern roundabout intersections as one of nine proven lifesaving roadway safety strategies. Modern roundabouts are not only safer than traditional signalized and stop-controlled intersections, where appropriate and properly designed, roundabouts operate more efficiently, often have lower lifecycle costs, and result in increased fuel efficiency. So what is a roundabout? A roundabout is a circular intersection. Traffic flows counterclockwise around a center island. Entering traffic yields to circulating traffic in the roundabout. Channelized approaches using splitter islands deflect traffic as it enters the intersection, slowing speeds. While the vast majority of roundabouts are single-lane, one quarter of the roundabouts in the U.S. have two lanes, which also provide safety benefits. Roundabouts with up to three lanes have been successfully built. Mini roundabouts can be used in low-speed urban environments in lieu of a stop sign or traffic signal. Roundabouts are different from other types of circular intersections that you might have seen. They are not rotaries or the older traffic circles, which are still common in the northeastern United States, which typically have higher speeds in approaches and usually higher speeds within the circle. They may use stop or signal control, or they may require circulating traffic to yield to entering traffic. A roundabout is also not the same thing as a neighborhood traffic circle, typically used on local streets for speed control. Roundabouts have several distinguishing characteristics and benefits, setting them apart from other intersection types. Traffic can move freely through roundabouts. This makes them more efficient than signalized or stop-controlled intersections. Unlike other types of intersections, roundabouts are designed to slow the speed of vehicles entering by deflecting them from a straight-line path into the roundabout. Drivers approaching the roundabout have time to judge for gaps in the circulating traffic and either yield or adjust their speed before entering the intersection. This allows for safer entries into circulating traffic. In addition to channelized approaches, signs, and pavement markings on the roadway guide drivers to make sure they take the proper entry path. Roundabout intersections can require additional space compared to a traditional intersection, but they may be constructed within the existing right-of-way. Roundabouts eliminate dangerous left turns across opposing traffic lanes and virtually eliminate high-speed right angle and head-on crashes. While initial construction costs can be higher with roundabouts, they often have lower operating and maintenance costs than signalized intersections. They can have ongoing costs for lighting and maintaining the landscaping, but unlike a signalized intersection, there is no signal equipment to install, power, and maintain. Roundabouts have longer service lives than traditional intersections, resulting in better economic value over the long term, especially when you factor in the reduction of fatal and injury crashes. Roundabouts are also the greenest intersection alternative. Roundabouts are also the greenest intersection alternative, and not only because of their aesthetic appeal. Reduced vehicle idling means fewer emissions and less wasted fuel. Less acceleration and fewer sudden hard stops means quieter, more peaceful transportation through communities. Landscaping in the Central Island, Splitter Islands, and along the approaches can further benefit and enhance community livability. With all of these benefits, why aren't all transportation agencies building modern roundabout intersections? One of the biggest reasons transportation agencies overlook this proven intersection safety solution is out of concern that the public just won't accept them. Trying one roundabout is usually all it takes to convince even the biggest skeptic of their benefits. In the 12 years the department has been building roundabouts, we've had our share of skeptics. But what we've found is after the roundabout is built, the skeptics become supportive of the idea, which is a tribute to the time savings and the safety benefits that a roundabout offers. Some states now have roundabout policies that state that roundabouts should be considered as an intersection alternative. Numerous states like Washington and cities across the country like Carmel, Indiana, have embraced roundabouts and support their development. Washington State now has more than 150 roundabouts, and the city of Carmel, Indiana alone has more than 50 roundabouts with many more planned.
We were one of the first communities in the Midwest to build roundabouts and make the determination that they work better than stoplights in many, many cases.
A common concern for people that have not experienced driving through a properly-designed roundabout is that they won't be able to get used to the new traffic pattern. But studies consistently show just the opposite. The public overwhelmingly supports roundabouts after they are constructed. Older Americans in particular are supportive of roundabouts.
By 2025, a quarter of all drivers in the United States will be over the age of 65. Intersections are the single most dangerous traffic environment for drivers of any age, with left-hand turns being the single most dangerous traffic maneuver that any of us can make. Forty percent of all crashes that involve drivers over the age of 65 occur at intersections. This is nearly twice the rate of experienced younger drivers.
AARP would like to see more roundabouts constructed because of the many safety benefits that they present for drivers of all ages.
As with all new traffic treatments, thorough public education, effective signing, and pavement markings are key to educating all drivers on new traffic patterns. So, are roundabouts safe for other road users? In general, pedestrians face far less risk at roundabouts than traditional intersections, primarily because of the slower speeds and the elimination of turns across the pedestrian crosswalks. Splitter Islands both shorten the crossing distance for pedestrians and allow them to cross one direction of traffic at a time. All of this adds up to increased safety. There is ongoing research to determine the most effective strategies for making roundabouts accessible for visually impaired pedestrians. The US Access Board has been active in the development of design guidelines for roundabouts. The National Cooperative Highway Research Program, NCHRP, is also researching a range of geometric designs, traffic control devices, and other treatments to make roundabouts more accessible to pedestrians with vision impairments. Bicyclists can dismount and use the pedestrian crosswalk, or experienced bicyclists can ride through the roundabout. What about trucks and other large vehicles? Are they able to navigate through roundabouts? Roundabouts can be built to accommodate the turning radio of large trucks and trailers, just like any other intersection. Roundabouts generally have truck aprons, a slightly raised area around the inner circle that provides trucks, buses, and other large vehicles additional room to navigate the roundabout. So what do emergency service providers think about roundabouts? Emergency service providers are able to navigate through roundabouts with their largest vehicles. In emergency situations, roundabouts can be safer and more efficient for an emergency vehicle than traditional intersections. Roundabouts can work very well on a wide range of road types, including freeway interchanges, urban and suburban corridors, and high-speed rural roadways. Some people think they can't be constructed on state roads, but that's just not true. There are numerous examples of successful roundabouts built on state roads, and the number is growing rapidly. The importance of proper design cannot be overstated. Good design is critical to the success of a roundabout. Other keys to success include public involvement and stakeholder support. FHWA offers numerous resources, including a one-day informational workshop for state and local transportation agencies. To learn more, visit the FHWA safety website.
Well-designed roundabout intersections have been proven to not only help traffic move more efficiently, but also reduce the risk of fatal and serious crashes. This is why the Federal Highway Administration is strongly encouraging state and local leaders to take a hard look at roundabouts as an alternative to conventional intersection designs. If you're looking for ways to reduce congestion, improve safety, and enhance your community's environment, modern roundabouts may be just the solution for you. I'll move quickly through the rest of this. Just want to kind of point out why roundabouts are safer. More severe accidents are, happen at higher speeds and higher angles. And that's what this chart shows. This is a comparison between a traditional intersection and a roundabout. In a traditional intersection, speeds tend to be higher, the conflict points at much more, larger angles, right angle, side, broadside kinds of collisions. In a roundabout, those angles are reduced and the conflict points are reduced. Similar phenomenon happens with pedestrian movements. Roundabouts are safer for pedestrians. This was brought up in the video. The National Cooperative Highway Research Program has done a study called Modern Roundabout Practices in the United States. Basically, it says that it's not uncommon for people to feel concerned about roundabouts, but after they're built, public opinion will generally change. This slide shows our source of funding and proposed expenditures. We have a grant for $895,000 proposed. It's largely a beautification grant. That's important because also I believe this roundabout serves as a gateway to the downtown, and it's our, if we were to move forward, it would be our intent to truly make it an attractive gateway. With that, I'm going to ask Brian to come up and talk to you about parking in the downtown.
Brian, I'm wondering if we should save that to the next meeting and just deal with the roundabout issue tonight? Can we do that?
We could certainly do that. I think that's the more critical of the two, from timing, and the other one is authority to get a study, so yes.
Okay, good. Let's do that. Okay, we have speaker cards. Adam Chant.
Hello, my name is Adam Chant. I'm a business owner on the Boulevard. I'm also a member of the Boulevard Association. And I just wanted to say that I'm speaking on behalf of pro for the roundabout. Some of my motivation behind that is accidents that have happened in the past. We can take 47th Street in Palmdale as an example, high collision accidents we saw in the presentation, the high angle of attack. That would be eliminated, obviously, this isn't a high-speed area. But one thing we've noticed as business owners, being on the Boulevard every day, we still see a lot of traffic come through at a high rate of speed. Something that's implemented out at Edwards Air Force Base to prevent these kind of things from happening that's very aesthetic is a swerve that occurs right before you enter the main gate. The motivation behind that is to change the traffic pattern, change the psychology, and allow the driver to realize there's a change in conditions and produce a more even flow and slow down that speed. It's just a natural tendency, people would drop down to the lower speed and present that as a safety detail that's very important, considering that there have been incidences in the state of California where people have been killed at farmers markets because cars have driven through a street when it was just supposed to be locked off, and there wasn't any proper abatement. And of course, we have the ballards, but at the same time, a full-speed automobile, a full-size automobile could conceivably create a problem if we're not in the area of the ballards. And with a roundabout, that's a safety detail, it's going to be unlikely that somebody would be able to maneuver through there and create a problem. And that's things that have happened. That's a case that happened in 2003 in July in Santa Monica and Main Street. And it was a fairly famous case in the state of California. And I just wouldn't want to see the City of Lancaster facing any kind of issues because we overlooked something. It's just a safety aspect, the beautification aspect is wonderful. Transitioning from the main part of the Boulevard to, say, Avon's Furniture, only having a pedestrian having to look at one view of traffic is nice, like what we do when we transition across the street right now. It's nice to only see one view of traffic at a time. So pedestrian traffic along to the Boulevard, from the Boulevard to Avon's, and say, from the Boulevard to AMPM, around the roundabout makes it convenient. There are a number of people that live down the Boulevard, up around Montevista area, that we see, we say hi to every night, that walk by our stores, and those are the type of people that would benefit from this, just from the foot traffic. So that's all I want to end with that, because I'd like to talk to some stuff about the parking situation, but I'll have to come back for the next meeting for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Reeves.
I oppose the roundabout. And if you've noticed the film we saw on the roundabouts, almost all of them had huge areas of land, and they were double-laned, looked like the size of football fields. So, we have a furniture store, we have a gas station over there at the Boulevard, and how are we going to fit that in and not condemn those businesses? That's something we ought to consider. I did my survey that I submitted to you about parking, and I suggested that we could have better parking if we removed some of the light fixtures in the middle of the Boulevard and connected the lights to the corner buildings, creating probably double parking, double amount of parking in the middle of the street. So that would take care of the parking. I think one of the problems, though, is not so much the parking, it's the speed, the access on the Boulevard. We're going to build a roundabout, it's going to slow people down, slow people down before they can get into a congested street. I think that if you look at the gas station in the corner and you're coming up to the Boulevard, like I mentioned before, there's an alley. We need another street, another access to the stores. That's the problem. The traffic is, people slow down because they have to slow down. We need another way to get into the Boulevard. If we could go to that alley that's over by the gas station before you get to Lancaster Boulevard, create a street that would maybe go six or seven blocks down, that would take some of the traffic congestion problems to take care of them. And if we did what I said in the middle of the Boulevard and removed some of those barriers and trees and stuff and created more parking places there, we would not need parking structures. That's what I would like to bring up before we can, I know we're going to use federal money, state money, local money, but I would like us to use, try to use what we have, creating more parking places, try to create another access to the Boulevard before we spend millions of dollars on a roundabout, which is going to, it's going to be smaller than what we've seen on the screen, and I don't think it's going to be feasible. I don't know anybody that's going to slow down and turn into that Boulevard at less than 25 miles an hour. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roxy Patterson.
Mr. Mayor, fellow councilmen, I'm used to Toastmasters at this lectern, so pardon me if I act like I'm still in Toastmasters. I came up here with the thought that I was going to talk against the roundabout, but I've been roundabout 62 years, and one time I went to Palmdale on their roundabout and it scared me to death. So I thought I wanted to be roundabout another 62 years, and I was going to come and talk against it. But after seeing what Robert showed us, I'm almost a convert. What I'd like to suggest is a couple things. That this video be captured, duplicated, and spread out everywhere. Give it to the senior center. Put it on YouTube. Put it on your website. Because it's very informative, and it helps the naysayers gain some information. I would also suggest that when you're planning this out, that make sure the signs are very good, because that was one of the fear factors out in Palmdale. I thought I was going to get run over, and I was beeped out, and I'm thinking, where are the signs? What do I do? So if people felt more comfortable, they may not be as a naysayer. Now, the things that I do have exception to is the impact that it might have on the local businesses in that area, because I know some businesses that had impact when you were working on the Boulevard, and it reduced the amount of people that would go there. I don't know if you're making something for them, just in case, or you're giving them extra money, to compensate for any loss of business. But those would be the things I would suggest that you try to do to make sure they don't feel the loss. Meanwhile, educate everybody, and I think you have a convert, and you might use me for the test case, because I can get confused. I'm 62, but I'm, you know, I'm a wild and woolly woman, and I plan to stay that way, and I want to continue driving, so help me change, I will help everybody else change, but spread that video around.
Thank you. It's an excellent idea. Why don't we put it on our, you know, riveting TV channel? Okay. Stephen Kinsey.
Mayor, Council, thank you very much for, oh, no, thank you. Stephen Kinsey, business owner on the Boulevard, Boulevard Association member. I love what this city has done downtown. You've reinvigorated it, you've brought people here, and you've made this beautiful destination for us, but you've left off the front door. It's not complete. And I think by putting this anchor at the, at one end, it'll, it'll help to complete the image that was intended. As a resident, when I come down here, especially on Thursdays for the farmer's market, I'm coming from the west side, and, well, daily, the traffic is getting worse and worse at the intersection. It's backing up Common Place to 12th Street on the farmer's market days. I've actually seen it backed up to Lotree, which, to come downtown, as a business owner, I think is great, but it's very weird, and it's getting dangerous, I believe. Also, the speed, I'm sure you're all aware, on one side of 10th Street is 45 miles an hour, and on the other side of 10th Street, 30 feet away, is 15 miles an hour. So without the roundabout, we're asking people to go from 45 to 15 in the distance of an intersection. So the roundabout will.
That's a good point. Okay. We'll look at that.
Yeah, so I think the roundabout will also help alleviate problems of that. Thank you.
Thank you. David Grajeda.
I like the idea of roundabouts. From what I know, from the experience that I've been through, it eliminates the left-hand turn, and if you guys are familiar with traffic, that's the most common accident in all of America. It eliminates that, but, you know, this, the way we're going to put this in, because I know there's already, we've already bought the plan for it, so me speaking up against it or for it makes no difference, you guys already made up your mind. But yeah, it eliminates, it eliminates the left turn. I've been involved in a left-turn accident once in my life, and it was pretty bad. And, you know, it's more efficient. I like efficiency, I do, you know? Like what Mr. Reeves said earlier, you know, if you want to solve your parking issues, let's work with what we got before we decide to spend our money. And what I mean by our money, I mean taxed dollar. mean tax dollars, or however you get it. You know, and, you know, we could set aside, you know, some money that we do get from grants or whatnot, and improve the city more. I do like roundabouts. Is it good for Lancaster Boulevard and 10th? I don't know, but I know it's good for Challenger Way. That's where I got my accident. And, you know, you know, that video's educational, it is. I mean, I didn't see anything wrong with it, other than, you know, they try to kind of fear monger a little bit, but, you know, I've been involved in one of these accidents, and I know how serious they can get. You know, I broke the other guy's collarbone, and I took off, you know, because I was young, and I was involved in the whole hit-and-run thing, and, you know, I feel, I feel sorry for the guy, and, you know, now that I'm older, I hope not to make those type of choices. And when I come around a roundabout like the one in Palmdale, I know a left-hand accident is not going to happen. So I'm actually kind of for them, but, you know, don't make, don't make good things look bad. That's all I'm trying to say. And it says that in the Bible, I'm sure you guys are well aware of what that is. Don't make good, good things look bad. So if you're going to put a roundabout, you know, be more open about it, instead of paying for a plan that you guys already have done, you guys are going to put it in. So it doesn't matter whether or not you guys are for it. So, thank you.
David Abber?
Evening, Council, staff, and citizens. I don't think the roundabout's a very good idea at all, because I know, I don't know what the figures are, but I'm sure we could get them with respect to just buying the Florestout over there and the other shops over there on that corner that would be the west-south corner. Sure, we're already into that quite a bit of money. Looks like another $3 million minus the $890,000 for the grant, so that's $2 million more dollars. So $2 million more dollars would go a long way towards building a parking structure. And then, when you guys figure out that if you had to build parking structures, you can block off Lancaster Boulevard and make it more like the Santa Monica Promenade, which has been around for a while. So maybe studying that might give you guys an idea of what to expect. We have a good thing going there with the boulevard, and if you guys develop it right by not putting the roundabout in, which will cause accidents, it's a bad idea, it's going to cause more lawsuits, people will be confused. The lady had a great idea. Sure, we could get it out there on the internet and the computer, so forth and so on. It's already too congested at that corner, and it would be an absolute further nightmare. So take all the money you've got, the $2 million that you're looking to spend on this, still got your $900,000 to beautify things, and go in a different direction where we put in parking structures, block the boulevard off from through traffic all the way around, put the parking structures in where the people come from the backside, you'll alleviate all the traffic jams that you're going to have. So take the $2 million, it'll be a great start on your parking structures that are necessary. Realize you got something good going with the boulevard, but you just kind of missed the parking point. So when you can create more parking on the backside coming in, then you will not have all the confusion you have with the farmer's market or the nicer event you had on the weekend with the celebrating America, having to put up all the barricades and so forth and so on. You'd save money from staffing, all that, with the people tearing it up, putting it in, so forth and so on. So we could save a lot of tax dollars by taking a good look at what we're doing with the little barricades and so forth and so on, and plan a little better for the future. And I'm sure we'll save a lot of money with all the resources that are wasted on Lancaster Boulevard, putting the barricades up and so forth, and we will begin to utilize our tax dollars much better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay, good. Is there a motion?
A move that we direct staff to proceed with the fiscal year 2011-2012 capital improvements project for the downtown roundabout. That's Project 15ST030, and to design and construct a roundabout at the intersection of Lancaster Boulevard and 10th Street West.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to say a, a couple things. I think that Roxy had a great idea in regards to the putting it on Channel 28 and making everything. I was and still am a skeptic on the roundabout, but I do think that it's some time that you have to listen to the professionals. Everybody is saying, and it showed to me, that the Federal Highway Administration and everybody is saying that people will learn to like it. I'm just voicing my opinion that I don't like it at this point, but I'm going to vote for it because I'm going to listen to the professionals that say it's going to be better and safer for the community at this time. I just wanted to put that in.
Mr. Mayor, for your call for the vote, you know, one of the things that struck me the most, because actually Ron and myself saw a presentation very similar to this about five to six years ago, and my biggest takeaway was the safety that it gives our seniors here in Lancaster. And you saw and heard statistics tonight about the reduction in accidents at a four-way intersection. And clearly, this is one of the takeaways. I know that, again, you know, there's some skeptics that sometimes approach this, and, you know, I think that Roxy, again, her recommendation, I think that's an excellent recommendation. Maybe we even get the, get the, maybe the local news to pick up on this piece and get it out there as well. So I appreciate her coming here tonight and, and giving us that suggestion, so.
Just follow-up, I did attend the meeting that Adam was at for the Boulevard Association. That was a major concern that I had. They seemed to buy into it. They seemed to enjoy it, they seemed to like it, and I think staff did a tremendous job educating the public and Robert, and you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to the council agenda. As everyone knows or should know, Councilmember Marcus has resigned due to the illness of her parents. It's not going to be the same without her. I certainly, I don't know, I've grown to rely on her, I'm going to miss her. I wish she was able to, to finish, but I certainly understand that she is not. So with that, do I have to do a motion to accept it, or do we just accept it?
I think based on ordinance, you have to declare a vacancy, correct?
Yeah, the vacancy is declared by the council, so it would be most appropriate for a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to declare a vacancy?
I'm going to, we declare a vacancy for Councilmember Marcus who resigned.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. We have... We have speaker cards on this, but... Have I voted too quickly? It's not really something that they discuss, is it?
It would, it would, it would be appropriate to, to hear the speakers.
And then vote again?
Well, the, the action, the action has been taken, but it would, it would be appropriate to hear the speakers.
Okay. Michael Reeves?
Good evening for the last time. Last time we spoke about the vacancies on the council, I recommended a procedure for you filling this vacancy and subsequent vacancies, and that was to have interested parties submit an application to the council, and the council reviews the applications and has the interested parties speak before the council for three to five minutes. This way, the public would have some participation in it. The only other alternative, I think, to have public participation in it would be to have an election, which the media reports that cost $150,000. In the future, we might want to consider consolidating our city elections with the state-county elections, so that if it's feasible financially, because if we were consolidated with them, we could have the election in November for the seat. But in lieu of that, going back, I think it would be a great thing if you submitted applications from the general public and reviewed them, and then had them speak and make a decision from those people who are interested. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Helm?
Good evening, Mayor Paris, City Council members. I'm Elizabeth Helm, resident of Lancaster, and a citizen, and a person who is involved in the community. I want to speak to you today about an important issue related to the now vacant City Council seat. I do not feel that there is enough diversity in the group of people that govern our city. Sherry Marquez's resignation provides a great opportunity for the Honorable Mayor Paris and remaining members of the City Council to demonstrate that they can be inclusive rather than exclusive. This is an opportunity to demonstrate that Lancaster is not the rural backwater of prejudice, that it is perceived to be based on inflammatory statements of a fetal. We are not simply a city of whites, nor are we a city of just Christians. The truth is, the people who formed the community of Lancaster are Sikh, Hindu, Buddhist, atheist, agnostic, Jewish, Baha'i, and Muslim, to name just a few, of some of the other belief systems, besides the many forms of Christianity. We are a community of blacks, Hispanics, Asians, and Pacific Islanders, Caucasians, and Native Americans, and we are diverse. We are a community of gays, straights, bisexuals, and transgendered. We are a community of diversity that I do not see reflected amongst anyone, or very few people amongst the people that are governing us. And I'm very concerned, because we don't need people to be disenfranchised. Regardless of who's appointed in the end, I believe that those who have been elected should remember that they have a moral and ethical obligation to represent the entire population. In summary, please consider how the diverse community of Lancaster will be watching how you go about deciding who should replace Sherry Marquez.
Are you saying no more old fat white guys?
Are you labeling yourself that way, sir?
Elizabeth, I have a question for you.
I think it fits.
Yes, sir.
Does a female Asian count as a minority?
Let me say that diversity is not just about how we appear, it's about how we think. I think the important aspect is that we have members of our government who speak up and are not just naysayers, that are willing to be devil's advocate, that are willing to speak up and challenge you to look at the decisions that may not always be in the best interest of the entire community.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Gary Burgess? That was excellent, by the way. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council-
Sorry, you're an old fat white guy.
Maybe I'll plop for the job, huh? I'd like to say this evening that I appreciate Sherry, excuse me, Sherry Marquez serving on the council, and for her foresight and diligence to make this a safer community in which to live. I feel that at times it becomes necessary for persons in public office to focus their energies if they expect to be successful in their endeavors. Mrs. Marquez has shown that she definitely had a focus and commitment these past three and a half years, and that focus and commitment has been to serve the citizens of Lancaster with their best interests at heart. Thank you, Sherry Marquez, for serving our community for so well. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. David Grijeda?
I think that what we should do, well, I, you know, I found something interesting. You said, you know, you kind of described Kiriseta. Are you guys thinking of putting her up there? Because then she's going to be a Chinese liaison, and then she's also going to be the deputy mayor, and then she's also going to be on the redevelopment industry. So how many other conflicts of interest do you want to get yourself into? I'm not saying that you are, but I'm just saying. As much as I would love to sit right there and question every one of the public servants, I would suggest someone that's already ran for City Council, Michael Reeves, and he's a very intelligent man, very articulate. He seems to know and care a lot about the community. I, Sherry Marquez, she's an interesting person to me. I mean, she, I guess, sometimes didn't like the way I would come up and speak on so many agenda items, you know, and stuff like that, but I don't see her as an evil person or anything like that. I see her, she, she has good intentions, but sometimes her personal life can get the better of her, especially in public and on the internet. And I'm just saying, we should really take into consideration, you know, the people that are involved in this community, who do say the right things, who are credible, and, you know, give them a fair shake. I'm just as eager to figure out who's going to sit in that seat. Thank you.
Can I appoint convicted felons?
Yeah, I would have to look into that. I don't know if that-
No, thank you. Speaking of, David Abber?
Good evening again. I'm sure I'm going to take some heat for this, but I actually agree with something Rex said, and I'm sure that shocked a few of us. This lady over here had a lot of good things to say, and I appreciate her coming in and enlightening you over there, hopefully. I know this is about the resignation. First and foremost, I want to thank Sherry Marquez for stepping down, and I want to thank the council, who's already voted on this, to accept that resignation. Seems to me it was just the last meeting when I requested Sherry Marquez's resignation from this exact council, along with Rex and Ron's. And I also requested that resignation a couple of years ago. Okay? And the good thing about Sherry stepping down, you know, for whatever the reasons may or may not be, that we're now going to move in the right direction as a city and begin to heal from the damage that she has inflicted on the citizens with the violations of civil rights and her discriminatory behavior. And it's time for the rest of the council members to realize that this is something that cannot be tolerated. And therefore, having said that, whether we have a special election, which would be the right thing to do, or if we choose to appoint somebody, well, I've thrown my hat in the arena out here a few times, and I would be more than happy to finish out Sherry's term for free. Period. Thank you.
We'll certainly give that the consideration it deserves. So, on a more serious note, my understanding of the procedure is that we cannot have a special election. Is that correct, Ms. Adams?
The, the current version of the municipal code provides that the exclusive method for filling a vacancy is appointment by the mayor with the consent of the City Council.
And so that's what we'll do next week. If anyone seriously wants to be considered, and, you know, I would suggest that, well, let's make it a safe bet, I'm not going to nominate any convicted felons, so they shouldn't waste their time. But anybody that is qualified, please talk to the council members, and I will consider anybody that the council passes on to me. But it will be in two weeks that we make that appointment. As to appointing somebody of color is what we were really talking about. I'm sorry, what?
Diversity, not just color.
That's correct. You know, I, I, I think I'm probably the most well-read person on Scott Page's functional diversity and the effect that it has on government decisions. I don't know if anybody else has read him. I certainly haven't met anybody else who has read him. And so I'm a big believer in that. And in fact, much to, whether you know it or not, the, there are more people of color in city government of Lancaster today than in any time in history. And so this perception that people of color are not welcome, or not invited to, to take part in the leadership of this city- in the leadership of this city is simply wrong, and it's being perpetuated by people who have their own agenda or who cannot count. It can only be one of the two. With that being said, I certainly intend to look at that as one of the factors involved. But whoever fills that seat is going to be exceptionally qualified. It is too important of a seat to give to friends, it's too important of a seat to give to for political reasons, and I think everybody, although I haven't decided yet, I do have one person in mind, and depending on what she says, and also depending on who else is put forward, I'll make a decision. Okay? All right, everybody got it? So if you have somebody, let me know. Now, moving on to CA 2. Do I have to take speaker cards on this? Okay. All right, we're going to, I'm going to ask you to appoint Councilmember Mann to the AVTA and the AVA QMD. As to who replaces Ms. Marcus on the Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission, I'd like to wait until after the appointment, two weeks from now, to fill that seat.
When you decide to appoint, actually, the council has to give you permission first before you actually make a decision.
I'm sorry, but we're on to another item.
Yes.
If you would stay on agenda, I appreciate it.
On committees, correct? Is this not a committee? Are we, are you in front of a, I'm in front of a committee. I see a committee here, and I see an empty seat. Same thing with the other ones. You know, I would hope that there would be no discrimination of any kind, whether or not somebody has done something wrong in their past and they're looking forward to making the correct steps. That's just discrimination. You can call it what you want, you can say, oh, he's qualified, and this person's, no one here, including yourself, Mr. Mayor, is less qualified than I am or anybody in this room. Everyone here is as qualified as you are to sit on that seat, to question the city manager, to question anybody who is a public servant. We are all qualified, just as if they're gay, transsexual, black, white, Asian, it doesn't matter, okay? Nobody was talking about color, first of all, and your observations were incorrect. She's talking about discrimination of any kind. So you can go ahead and you can laugh all you want, but you know what? There's a growing consensus that people don't like you, and people don't like you sitting on that chair. People don't think that you're a great mayor, okay?
They should both be out there, shouldn't they?
Okay, and I'm not starting to complicate you.
You should run against me. I mean, this is a democracy. If people don't want me to sit here, that's why we have elections.
Not a democracy, sir. It's a constitutional republic. So when you learn that, you can sit there and you can talk to me about government. I'm way above your head when I'm talking about political stuff, all right? Anything you want. You want to debate me politics, we can do it. Trust me, I'll be outside right here in front of City Hall any day you want of the week, and we can go and debate. And I will, I will shred you to pieces, okay? I don't agree with a lot of stuff that you do here, and yeah, you should probably resign since you want to take some of my time. So I would recommend this council go against what he says, because he already has somebody in mind, okay? And it's up to you, it's your decisions. So whether or not he likes to dig himself a big hole by opening up his mouth, hey, you can fall in there with him.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, moving on.
I'll second the appointment of Councilmember Mann to the AVTA and the AVA QMD.
Let's vote.
He hasn't said he wanted it or not yet, do you want?
No, you don't get to.
You don't get to. Anyway.
That's not how it works around here.
I learned that the hard way.
I accept.
Well, we got to elect you first. It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to council reports. Vice Mayor Smith.
Yeah, I, staff has put a report in for the last sanitation district meeting, and it's just basically perfunctory votes, and we're still working on keeping the rates lowered for the restaurants and doing some of those studies and looking at taking over the management from the centralized LA County and doing it ourselves out here as the agency.
Thank you. Councilmember Crist.
AVTA, no real news to caution anyone about. They are still looking at Bus Route 8. So if anybody rides Bus Route 8, they need to contact AVTA and voice their concerns. And it's my understanding, we have a new marketing manager at AVTA, a local person, so we look forward to getting AVTA on the map. So that's about it.
Thank you. No action on Lancaster Financing Authority, no action on the Lancaster Housing Authority. City Manager, any announcements?
Just one, and I need to take a minute to brag on staff. We had a fantastic event on Saturday, Celebrate America, is one of the best events we've had. The patriotic feeling was just off the charts. But I need to let people know that those events don't happen easily or without a lot of planning. They start a month ahead of time, at least, planning, making sure security's there, making sure the vendors are there, making sure insurance, all those things. And then when it comes to the day, the staff, and it's not just the park staff, they lead it up, it's Public Works, the entire staff is out there the night before for parking, and then at 6 o'clock in the morning, starting setup. And they're there after the event is done till at least midnight and sometimes 1 o'clock, making sure teardown is done, all our crews led by Public Works at that point. And in addition to that, they always have to look at what they can't control, which is the weather. And we were checking weather.com every five minutes, and you have to make decisions on people's safety, just like at a football game or a baseball game, and decide when to evacuate and when you can continue. So I am always proud, and it's an honor to work with this staff, but I was particularly proud on Saturday. They showed themselves very well.
Thank you. City Clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the City Council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill the speaker cards out completely and concisely so that if necessary, the City Council, City Manager and City Staff will be able to get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Darlene Peterson. Rumors are flying, she says.
I won't tell all the secrets, so not to worry. First of all, the celebration the other night was really great. The weather was perfect, like if you really could plan it, because you couldn't have done it any better. But there was one thing missing, and that was the Andrew Systrow performance that you had last year. That needs to be done on Saturday, not the next day. Okay? They're really good, and they should be a part of that. Number two, oh, I've got a load of stuff. I would venture to say that the piano program on the Boulevard is a huge success. The reason I say that, I talked to three young people at various times that were playing the piano, and I asked them what they thought of the program. And they were all really thrilled. They says, we love to play, we love to practice, but we don't have a piano at home, so we come down here and practice. So it's a success. So you did something right. How about that? Miracles never cease. And I'm going to miss Chery Marcus. She did a good job for the community, and I'm sorry to see her go. And here's the rumor, now brace yourself. I heard that the city wants to take over the Cedar Avenue Theater, a historic building.
I thought we already did.
Pardon?
I thought we already did.
Well, I mean, I'm not through.
Okay, go on.
I heard you want to abolish it and put a parking lot there. I hope that is not true.
Darlene, you have got to quit listening to idiots.
Well, I try not to listen to you, but...
That was a softball. That was beneath you.
I know, but if you want to do combat, I'm not in. So I hope that is just a rumor. You wouldn't tear that down.
Cedar, well, just so we're clear, Cedar Street Theater.
Tore the Adobe House down and heard a lot of flack about that, so I hope we don't need a parking lot that bad.
I tore it down? We tore what down?
That Adobe House over here behind the...
That was him.
I knew that, but I was trying to give you some of the credit.
No, but let's be clear, Darlene, I'll give you some more time, but let's be clear. I think that that Cedar Street Theater is the most remarkable icon of this community that I could imagine. I mean, I was born right across the street from it. I mean, that was the first courthouse, that was the first jail. No, we've got great plans to redevelop that into restoring it to what it was and preserving it and making it a center, mostly for young people. But no, that's total nonsense.
All right, I want everybody to know and put Marcus down. You heard it from him that they're not going to do it.
I will cut off my little finger before I let anybody tear that down.
Don't have to. I will do it if you tear it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of concerns. One of them is on the Boulevard. There is a motorcycle skeleton in one of the parking spots, and I'm really concerned about that because there's a lot of the really large jacked up trucks in town. If they were to pull into that spot, they wouldn't be able to see that thing there, especially after a few drinks from Beck's, you know, a few drinks at a different bar, and they come up to Beck's and they pull in that spot right there, still being under .08, of course. If there was a child sitting on that thing, it would be a horrible thing, horrible thing. I recommend that that thing be removed because I do believe it is completely a safety hazard. I also wanted to touch on my concern on another subject, because I didn't get a card in time, for the Roundabout. I'm from Massachusetts, where we have a lot of rotaries that are pretty similar to a Roundabout. I do think the Roundabout's a good idea, but my only concern is the edges of the Roundabout, one being over by the corner of the gas station. Nobody's going to want that outside pump spot and the corner of the furniture store. We have tons of rotaries, like I said, where I'm from, and the only time you ever see accidents on those things are when you're going into it, because they try to squeeze two cars at a time. I've gone off the road myself like that, in that same manner. That's my only concern of that. There really needs to be some real safety, because I just picture a car going through the side of that furniture store or crashing into a car, trying to squeeze through and then hitting the car sitting at the most furthest outside pump at the gas station. Maybe those type of barrels with the water in them might be a good idea for that. And also, to touch on what the last lady had said, yes, you're already on record saying that you wouldn't do anything to Cedar Center. You would not demolish a single part of that building, and you said you would resign as mayor if you did.
Actually, I didn't say that. I said I'd cut off my little finger.
No, you said in the past. You said in the past. It was right around January 12.
That's correct. The Cedar Street, the Cedar Street Theater is going to be restored, and the plan is to take the old jail and make that a share state. I'll give you more time, but I just want to be clear. I mean, you know, these people start these rumors all the time, you know? Before I know it, I have horns growing out of my head. But the one thing you can rest assured is that Cedar Street Theater is going to be magnificent. But it's going to be restored the way it was, okay?
I sure hope so, because from what I understand, there's still the kerosene underground tank issue.
There's all kinds of issues. We'll fix it.
As well as the asbestos issue.
There's all kinds. I mean, some pools went in there and disturbed the asbestos. We had to close off a building because of it. As soon as we get it all back, we'll take care of it.
Well, currently, there's still a Cedar Performing Arts Academy in that place.
That's correct.
And with those contaminants still there.
Well, of course, there's a lot of places that have asbestos. Do you want me to explain it to you or not? There's a lot of places that have asbestos. The question is, is it disturbed? As long as it's undisturbed, what the scientists tell us is leave it alone. Now, when they went into the one building and started ripping the floor out, they disturbed the asbestos, and we had to close the building. But by the time we're done, all the asbestos will be gone, and we'll either, I don't know if we have to remove that kerosene tank, it's empty, we may, we may not, but it's going to be restored. It's going to be a magnificent facility, and we've already got donors putting money in to do it.
I hope so, because I used to do repairs in that building out of my own volunteering. One area in particular I'm very concerned about is the main hall, Schuster Hall. There is asbestos up on the ceiling.
That's correct.
And that ceiling has a lot of cork board stuffed with the holes in it. And with the dance studio being directly above it, as those kids are dancing around, banging down on it, the asbestos is coming down on the Thursday night open mic, for example, that sits in that main hall.
That's not my understanding. That's not my understanding. The fact is, is, you know, we're still in that litigation. If they would get rid of the litigation, we'd go in there tomorrow and fix it.
$1.5 million later, is it still worth it to you guys?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. It should be restored. It should be a magnificent part of this community.
It's part of the Boulevard project.
Well...
I'm sure eventually you'll have a nice office there. Thank you.
Where do these rumors come from? Say something cheery, would you?
I intend to, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. You know, it wasn't until later in life that I realized that loving your country is a lot like loving your children. What you want for them is the best future possible, and no matter what shenanigans they're pulling, you're willing to defend them with your life. I walk around like that, patriotic and proud all the time, but I've never been so proud as last week when we had our event on the Boulevard. To everybody, that was just magnificent. We had the lights. It was incredible. The Twin Towers lights were shining up, and the rain was falling through them. And to my right was an Elvis impersonator singing the Battle Hymn of the Republic. It was the best thing I've ever seen, and thank you all so much for that. I posted that on YouTube. It's one minute of inspiration that every one of you should try. I also posted the fireworks. We were walking home, I caught the trail end of it. It was just so exciting. I couldn't even sleep that night, I was so excited. The next day, I took my boys to the 9/11 ceremonies in Palmdale, and I was fortunate enough, and I thank the Annaline Valley Press for putting the little blurb about my friend in there. I wanted to just correct the record slightly. This amazes me. I have a lifelong friend who was a career military intelligence officer, and he was retired. And after 9/11, he rejoined the military. And one of the most spectacular moments I had was when, during the war, I couldn't hardly turn away from the television coverage 24 hours a day, but when they pulled on the statue of Saddam, he called me from the center of Baghdad, right before they were about to yank out the cell phone towers and share that with me. And that was just a triumphant moment. But what he endured to leave his family and go and do that, and his wife and their two teenage children, what a sacrifice. And that's the spirit of America that I love, and I want us all to get along so badly. We have to work together, or we're just going to go down in flames. That's the reality. So let's everybody dig deep and find some love for each other and figure out what we can do to move our city forward. That's what I want to say, and thank you for that awesome experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
I'd like to bring up two items tonight, if I have time. One, I commend your stand on prayer. This country was founded on Christian values and beliefs. Separation from church and state does not mean that the state cannot pray. It means the state cannot create a state-run religion. I refer to the First Amendment. The First Amendment to the United States Constitution is part of the Bill of Rights. This amendment prohibits the making of any law respecting an establishment of a religion or impeding the free exercise of the same. The Establishment Clause prohibits the... The Establishment Clause prohibits a federal, state, or municipal establishment or other preference for one religion over another, non-religion over religion, or religion over non-religion. This clause solely prevents the government from establishing a state church, not from publicly acknowledging God. If you choose not to believe, that is your right. I believe I'm here by the grace of God, and I have the right to express my thanks for that. What has happened to democracy? The voice of the majority is being silenced by the whisper of the minority. If this minority does not want to hear us apply our freedom of expressing our thanks to our God, they have the option not to listen, to come in after, or just wait outside. If they do not want to see a cross, they do not have to look. Our soldiers, be included, have and are fighting for us to retain our rights and freedoms. Are they fighting and dying for nothing? These rights and freedoms apply to us all, both believers and nonbelievers. So why are some trying to take these away from others? Are we without hope, like Chicken Little, going around thinking that we have no right to defend our own rights? Or are we going to put our hope in God and adapt and overcome? All evil needs to succeed is for good people to do nothing. And I want to express my thanks to the city for the 9/11, for the Celebrate America. That was wonderful. It really was. I think I love all those pictures of the people up on the banners, all our soldiers and our local heroes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Pearson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, staff, fellow citizens. My name is Mark Pearson. I'm an Antelope Valley resident since 1991, a father and small business operator. I came here tonight to discuss two issues that are most important to me and probably yourselves: crime prevention and growing our economy. I had an opportunity to speak with the City Manager briefly, and he's offered me an appointment within the next two weeks to discuss the second issue on how I think my proposal can help the City of Lancaster to grow 500 to 1,000 private sector jobs here. Big problem: unemployment in Antelope Valley. Let's talk about crime prevention. I want to say that I support the Council and the mayor's decisions in the last couple of years that have led to a reduction in crime in the Antelope Valley. I don't know what the exact percentage is, but I support our sheriffs. I'm a booster member, and the Neighborhood Watch program, and I'd like to ask all community members to consider supporting Neighborhood Watch and boosters in your immediate communities, because it really makes a difference. So thank you for that. I actually also was thinking about throwing my hat in the name to replace Councilmember Marquez, but apparently I'm disqualified.
Because you're from Palmdale, not because you're a convicted felon.
I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant? I don't think you've ever spoke here before, so I'm going to go ahead and let you speak, but you have to get the card in before the first card is called, okay? But go ahead. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. My name is Prince, and I have my own business called Rapture Go. And about the street closing, they don't notify the store owner about what they doing and people skateboarding and, you know, that kind of stuff. They need to have a sign about no skateboarding down the sidewalk, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you. You know, on the skateboarding issue, just so you know, that we are on top of that, but maybe not in the way you want us to be. I'm not all that opposed to them doing it at certain times of the day. I think that, you know, kids should have as much use of that Boulevard as we do. And I've asked the skateboard store to try to police it, so that they're not interfering with pedestrian traffic. And when the pedestrian traffic rises, they have to stop. Now, I think the deputies have been working on that. Are we getting compliance? But that's what I'm hoping to do, is have a balance, rather than having, you know... I don't know. I think that we should be as free as we can be, as long as people aren't in danger. But if you find that, you know, that's not working, tell the deputies, and then we'll go from there. Okay? As to notifying on the street closures, you know, it sounds easy, but there's a lot of business owners, you know? And unless you go onto the Internet, we can put it on the Internet, on the website, but to actually notify each and every business owner, you know, it cuts down on our ability to have events. So that's just a problem.
And I would suggest, maybe, if you get involved with the Boulevard Association, the events are talked about well in advance. You're already a member of the association. Go to a couple of the meetings, and they'll talk all about that as well, too, and staffs at every meeting.
Okay, thank you. David Graehida.
Imagine that. They say I'm a dreamer, but I'm not the only one. Ni hao. Yeah, what an interesting meeting. I do love this exchange of words. I feel it's good for the community, you know? I just say, you know, last time I tried to speak against Deputy Mayor, Redevelopment Chair, your employee, and maybe soon to be new City Council member, there's got to be a conflict of interest somewhere in between there, right? I mean, if she votes no to something, I mean, if she votes yes to something that you favor, I mean, will she get fired if she votes no to something that you favor? You know, those kind of questions pop into my head, so...
I can assure you, she tells me no frequently.
Okay, well, I'm sure she does, but you know what? Like you said, that's a very important chair, so I don't doubt that you have an interest in filling that seat. Let me get off on another thing. You acquired building, you had a step down from the Redevelopment Agency because of a conflict of interest, okay? So, and I was looking at the state bar rules, and to one of the rules, you have to actually have, what is it, a judicial review before you purchase any property indirectly or directly, or have any of your employees, you know, you have to actually get a judicial review. And if you did that, I would love to know the judge's name. I would love to know what he thought about you purchasing land on the redevelopment zone that you later got caught with a conflict of interest for. Conflict of interest, and which I was kicked out by Ron Smith over here. And I didn't interrupt you. You interrupted me, you know? How sad is that? My First Amendment right being trampled on, and we're talking about freedom of speech here. Not to mention all sorts of other stuff that happened to me. Oh, and I'd like to say congratulations to myself, since I got a DA reject on the incident that happened at the Boulevard over here. You know, I know I didn't do anything, but the mayor knows he did something. So if you, you know, you can't bring it up in court anymore, because I'm innocent. Okay? I went to jail. I still on, technically, I'm out on bail right now. That's money I don't have, that my girlfriend had to bail me out, because the bail bondsman said it's too less of a bail for us to waste the paperwork to do $50, to make 50 bucks. So thank God I have a beautiful girlfriend and a beautiful daughter that she cares so much about me to bail me out. You know, what a great, what a great country is when we have bail. You know, it sucks being a convicted felon, since you like to make light of that, but you know what? You were also a drug addict, okay? And you said, "Hey, you need to go..." And from your latest advance calling me crazy or whatnot, I feel that maybe you relapsed. If you need to go to rehab, you know, hey, maybe the shitty should cough up that dime, since we're spending money on all sorts of goodies that you like. Thank you.
Good job.
You know, I want to say something. Everybody here, sit down.
I'm sitting. I'm going to get a front row for this.
Good. You know, we all find this guy amusing, but he is a convicted felon. And the fact of the matter is, is he does stalk members of the staff and members of the City Council, and he likes to get up real close to them and glare at them. You know, we just had two suitcases that sent us out scurrying off into the parking lot, because we thought they might be bombs. These people are dangerous. They're dangerous to me, they're dangerous to our democracy. There are places that I do not go because of the people like this. They are nuts. They are convicted felons. And it's not funny to me that they, the way he sits behind my mother every council meeting. You know, it's not just me he threatens, it's my own mother that he threatens. And I just would like it clear that we shouldn't have to put up with that. The fact that I have to pay for security guards because of mentally unstable people is just abhorrent to me. And so when you see me react to him when he gets two feet away from me and starts glaring at me, I have been told that this man is dangerous, and that's why I do it. I think that our form of democracy, maybe, you know, there's something has to be done, so that all of us who decide to sit in this chair can do so with some level of security. You know, at the opening of the theater, we have a picture of him standing behind you and your wife glaring at you, you know? And you don't even know he's there. He actually told one of the law enforcement people that he was there to get even with Ron Smith, because he threw him out of the meeting. So when you laugh at this guy, understand that he's a convicted felon, and I believe he is dangerous to the members of this council. The last time we had a major problem with him, he was taking pictures of the deputy's children and putting them on YouTube. He likes to come into the City Council and film the women that work here, starting at their breasts and then working up to their face, and putting that on the YouTube. Just to give you some idea of the crap we have to put up with from these guys, it's beyond the pale. Now, that's the last I'm going to comment on it, but if you're wondering what's going on here, to me, it's not funny at all. You know, to the Congresswoman in that parking lot, it was not funny to her. Every public official in America today does so, sits in those seats under the threat of these whack jobs. And, you know, to me, it's just not humorous. And so I'd appreciate it if you didn't encourage him. Thank you. Now, David Abber.
Good evening again. When you run for office in the City of Lancaster, and I'm sure other places, City Clerk Jerry Bryant would have us hold our hands up and swear under an oath to protect and defend the Constitution. And everybody here had to do that. And that's the problem we have here. Person that's not standing here and disrespecting me as I speak, which is fine, the sarcastic remarks he makes, he's entitled to freedom of speech. His rudeness, his unprofessionalism, that's all fine and dandy. But when he makes statements attacking citizens, as he has, if he doesn't like the job of mayor that he has, and he's afraid, well, then I'd suggest he leave. Sherri Marquez left. Mr. Smith tonight, I have to say, I'm proud of him. He did not interrupt the speakers and deny them freedom of speech again. After last week, I said this must stop, and it did stop. So now if Mr. Paris will be accountable for attacking me in the gym, you know, and making false statements to the Police Department, which were absolute lies, then we will get to the bottom of your egregious behavior. Okay? And standing up there and telling the convicted felons, who are allowed to run for office, that they cannot sit there is a violation, is discrimination of the Constitution of the United States. And you will be held accountable for that. You do not have the right to discriminate against anybody that has the right to vote to sit in those seats over there. And the problem is, is you've created your own mess. Okay? You're the one that attacked me that day in the gym. You're the one that has the problem. You're the one that sat up there and told us all about, a year ago and change, that you were a recovering addict. Well, what are you recovering from? Do you have a drug problem, an alcohol problem? Well, if you do, sir, then I'd suggest checking to Betty Ford, get yourself some help. Maybe you've just lost it, or you've relapsed. And if that's the case, we'd like you to get some treatment. But attacking citizens like you just did to Mr. Graehida is unacceptable. So with Mr. Smith realizing his shortcomings, I thank you, denying freedom of speech, because you didn't pull that again tonight, and Sherri Marquez stepping down for her discriminatory behavior, you know what? Mr. Paris, you need to step down, because your behavior is unacceptable, and I intend on filing a lawsuit with the Federal Justice Commission and all elected officials that will find your egregious behavior today. Because you want to talk about putting something out on the Internet, I'll get this out on YouTube, and we will show the rest of the Republican leaders that will find your behavior here tonight appalling and a violation of the Constitution of this great country. Thank you.
He is correct. I do discriminate against felons. If I had my way, we wouldn't have any of them in the city. And if he thinks that he should sue us for that, he should do so. As to the other thing, does anybody really think that he would be walking around if I attacked him in the gym? I mean, let's be realistic. No more convicted felons and no more cards. Any comments from the City Council?
I have a couple.
Okay.
9/11, we had a tribute to all the fallen heroes in the valley. And October 2nd, we're going to have a Fallen Heroes Ride that starts at Harley-Davidson, which supports the families of the sheriffs, the CHP, the county firefighters, the correctional officers, and the Forest Service. So if you want to participate in that, it starts at 10 o'clock at Harley-Davidson, and it supports all those different entities. Number two, I'd like to make a comment on Sherri Marquez. I find that Sherri was a great person to learn from. She did a lot of good things for this community, and at least on my part, she'll be sorely missed, and she was truly a great American. And I'm sad to see her go, because I did learn a lot from her, and I learned sometimes what not to do and sometimes what to do. So she is a good person, and I want to thank her publicly for what she did for this community. That's all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Gary.
You know, Sherri was a very close friend of mine. In fact, I was one that had tried to convince her to run the first time, and I'm glad that she did, and she brought to the Council a very common sense approach. She was very folksy about it, and sort of talked like a hick once in a while, because she was from that kind of area. But she was very intelligent and loved the city, still loves the city, and I think, I told her before, even though she's got to be out, I think we're going to see her at that podium again numerous times when she gets ticked off at what's going on, and she'll be calling Mark personally all the time. So she will be tremendously missed by me.
You know, despite what was said tonight from a couple of members of the audience, it's sad that Sherri has to make a choice in regards to the position that she's in. But I'm sure that if any one of the four of us had to make the same decision, or we had to take care of a family member, we would do the same. So, you know, my heart goes out to her and her family.
Thank you. Chairman Chris, do you want to adjourn the Redevelopment Agency?
We're going to adjourn the Redevelopment Agency until Tuesday, September 27th, 2011.
And I'd like to thank everybody that stayed until almost 10 o'clock. Yes, Darlene, did you?
No, I'm used to saying goodnight.
Oh, goodnight. Hopefully, we will be able to have our regular meeting at its regular time next week. So the City Council and the Housing Authority and the Power Authority meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, September 27th, 2011. Carol, it's been a long day, and I am coming home.
Good job.